Now call this wrecker workshop meeting the Jacksonville City Council. Or, Council, you have a proposed agenda for tonight's workshop in front of you. You want to entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second, and further discussion. Here not all in favor signify when I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, I want to remind everybody that's in present tonight, this is a workshop. This is, there is no public comment in this particular function of the council. So, at this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Woodruff to introduce the first topic on gateway signage.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much. Several months ago, I believe in December, we talked with you about gateway signage. And at that time, there was a request that we add to the gateway signs, the moniker or logo of the TDA. This was sent out to you over the Christmas holidays, but I recognize that due to the holidays, many of you did not get a chance to give input. This is the design that the staff is recommending to you. You will notice it has the city logo on one end, and to balance the overall design, so it is similar to the Memorial Garden sign, it does not have a baluster at both ends. So, this is what we would recommend to you. We are in the position now, once you give us direction, to proceed with the actual specifications to send it out for bid. What are your thoughts? Are you comfortable with this design, or would you prefer other options?
Council input. You've not gotten any comments back from any council members?
No sir. But given the fact that it was over the holidays, we weren't sure that many of you had had a chance to actually study.
I mean, I think it's fine then. It's going to be in two or three places.
Well, it would actually become, the answer is, at least two or three places, and maybe more, based upon your specific approval to locate. You know, eventually, it'd be nice to have one of these on 17 as you head out towards New Bern.
Right.
Also on 24 as you come in, close to the railroad tracks, just near Piney Green. This first sign would be located at the intersection of Piney Green and Country Club.
Right.
And there may be other locations that you would approve. I would also remind you that this is funded using DOT and to a degree, maybe some TDA money on some of the other ones.
And there's two similar ones going to be up here near Beirut and one at the, I mean, one at the Beirut Grove, correct?
Well, we're still working on the design for the ones at the Beirut Memorial Grove. They would not be this large. They may be more vertical, but we're still working with the base and also the Beirut Memorial Committee, or the Lejeune.
The garden signs, not the grove signs, or?
Okay, let me answer that differently. Thank you, Ron. The signs at the Grove itself have already been approved, and they will look, one of them will look very similar to this. On the other hand, over here at the Memorial Gardens, we're working with the base and the committee there to determine what similar signage should be erected at that location.
We proposed similar, right?
Yes, sir.
Was it two posts or one? Do you remember?
Well, right now, we have two proposed. You know, you have, they're at the Memorial Gardens because you have basically a corner lot. So, we're looking to identify the proper locations for those, and those will come back to you.
Looks fine to me. Like the way it looks. Everybody good with that? Any comments?
No, man.
Just, you know, I'm still not sure what the purpose of the TDA sign on there is, but I'm not against it. I mean, you know, it looks fine.
All right, let's move to the next agenda item. At the last meeting, Chief, would you join me, please? At the last meeting, we talked with you about changing the regulations relative to wrecker. As you'll recall, the current regulations require the wrecker and storage lot to be located inside the city or to be located within the ETJ. As we've explained to you, that is, worked well until we began to substantially reduce the amount of ETJ. We also know that one of our long-term wrecker companies has recently lost their site in the ETJ because of DOT right-of-way purchase. And so, what we asked at the last meeting is, would you consider some other options? So, the Chief and I would like to talk with you for a few minutes about options. Here are some options for you to think about, and then we're going to show you some more information. One option is to locate within a specific distance from the city limits. Since we know the ETJ may eventually go away, or maybe three or four years from now, you may have another reduction in the ETJ, why not set the distance from the city limits line? Now, it's true, the city limits line may grow, but unlike the ETJ, it's not going to shrink. So, one option would be to pick a mileage, five miles, 10 miles, 15 miles out. This option would eliminate the concern that Mr. Warden and others of you expressed about having a storage yard all the way down to Sneed's Ferry, and someone who has a wreck on Western Boulevard having to go way down there or go all the way up to Richlands. Option two, locate within a specific distance from a significant point. For example, you're going to see a map in a minute, Western and Marine Boulevard. The vast majority of our wrecks occur where?
Western Boulevard.
So, in this case, since you're talking about the importance of time to respond, what you may do is say, that's the epicenter, Western and 17, and so, we're going to set the distance from there. The third would be something like this, allow grandfathering when the NC DOT, the city, or some governmental entity requires relocation. Now, what does that actually mean? It would mean you keep your city code where it has to be located, in the city limits or in the ETJ. But if your site is taken out of the ETJ by governmental action, you'd be grandfathered in. Or if your site was bought by the DOT, you'd be grandfathered in. Now, there's going to be some complication there, because obviously, if you buy the site, you can't be grandfathered in at that site. So, you'd have to set some regulations as to where you could move to. Fourth is no location requirement, just simply must respond within a set time. And number five, only allow companies one entry on the list. If you remember, currently, the data showed that we have a number of companies that actually have four wreckers. The vast majority only have one. Mike is going to show you in a few minutes that if you go out certain distances, there are already wrecker companies that are not in the ETJ and not in the city limits, and they will now be eligible to be added to the rotation list. And if they add just one wreck, it's one thing. If they add two, three, or four, it becomes another thing. So, let's look a second. Current towing entities. If you notice, out here to the far left is James Body Shop. You asked us the other day, how did that get to be on the rotation, because it's not in the ETJ? And our answer was, we honestly can't figure that one out. But they've been on the rotation. Goins, on the other hand, is directly across the street from James, but they're not on the rotation list because they're not in the ETJ or in the city limits. They are the company that is losing or has lost their space because of the DOT purchase. You can see some of the others. Cox, for example. Cox was in the ETJ at one time. We reduced the ETJ. They're no longer on the rotation list because they lost it because they weren't in the ETJ. You can see, you know, some of the other towing companies around. If you look at the city limits ranges, this, I believe that Glenn told me that this is the five-mile range from the city limits. But this just shows you, you know, certain distances. This one shows you even further out. So, if you wanted to go out 10 or 15 miles, you would set how far out it would go. And you can see that James Body is about six miles out from the city limits line there. And again, you know, here's a close-up of that same thing. If you did it from, not the city limits line, but from Western and Marine, once again, you could set up five-mile rings, 10-mile rings, whatever. The key is service delivery time. It's not location, it's how quickly can you get to the wreck. Y'all made an excellent point the other day, that when you are tying up a police officer for a wreck anywhere, and they have to wait 30 minutes, that's a lot of time. And usually, you're not just tying up one police officer, you're tying up several. And sometimes the fire department, sometimes EMFs. And guess who else you're tying up? The general public. The longer it takes to clear that traffic, the more inconvenient it is for everyone. Driving time, if you notice the colors, you may see the colors a little bit better than I can, but if you notice, there is a color for 10 to 12 minutes. This is from Western and Marine, and then one to two minutes. Now, I'm quite, I'll be honest with you, I'm not so sure how you can get to some of these locations in one to two minutes. But again, driving time is important. There are your options. I'd like to ask Mike if he would add some statistical information that they've looked at, please.
So, we've looked at how many wreckers, if you moved out to the five or 10-mile limit, would add 20 more wrecker services. And that's just services that we know of. There could be other services as well that are in that area. So, it'll take us some time to manage those additional time, because they have to be inspected every year. They have to be, they have to be managed from our telecommunications standpoint. And then, if there's an issue with any of them, then we have to have hearings and do investigations and a number of things.
Is that 20 companies or 20 wreckers?
20 companies. So, each, if they wanted to have four, according to the code, that would be 80 wrecker services that would, could have the potential to be on the list. Because each wrecker has the ability to have four different companies, if they have four different companies.
And one of the things that we would recommend to you, because, you know, certainly, government is not supposed to regulate free enterprise, but I think you would also agree, that if everybody went to the max, this thing could get out of control where it's very difficult to manage. So, one thing that we would recommend is that we seriously look at the number of wreckers, or wrecker companies that one group can own. Because as you know, right now, there are several that own four. The vast majority only own one.
I need clarification. I mean, one, so I have a lot. Now, if I got four wreckers, is that, you mean, is that the four you're talking about? Or am I sitting in one lot with four different, or the companies?
Four different entities. No. So, what happens is, is they have four different companies under one roof.
Oh, okay.
And so, each company, each company is on the wrecker. Like, they could have Mike's, they could have Yanaro's, they could have something else.
Quality.
Quality wrecker.
Blue wrecker.
Blue wrecker. So, I could have four different companies, as long as I have four different business licenses, and that would give me four different slots on the list. So, the list goes through a rotation. So, we call wrecker A one day, wrecker B the next, wrecker C the next. And the code allows for a particular company to have up to four wreckers.
So, that company could be A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
So, one company can have four wreckers.
Right. But one's only have one.
And so, is it going to?
If you think about it, if you think about it as in slots, so they could have four different slots on a rotation.
How many slots are in there now?
We have 20, I believe it's 29 slots that are on there right now.
I mean, it's, this seems.
But that's not 29 companies, that's 29.
Wreckers.
Wreckers.
Okay. How many companies, companies is there right now?
Well, if we can, Glenn, if you would look at the hidden slides from our last presentation, you should find the slide that shows the companies and how many have one slot and how many have multiple slots. Would you please find that?
I believe it's how many companies?
Please join us, if you'd please. Yeah, here it is. My number's a little different than Mike's. We'll accept Mike's, please. We showed 22 entities on the list, but actually 12 companies. That two companies had four locations, two companies had three locations, and eight companies had one location. So, Mike, to see if I understand this correctly, the eight companies that have one location, they can actually have four wreckers. Is that right? They can have multiple wreckers. They just operate, they can only respond to one slot.
Right.
Correct.
Right. They might have two or three wreckers, but they only have one company, one slot in the rotation. The two companies, two of those companies have four slots in those locations.
Because they have different names.
Right.
I mean, you really can, I mean, I guess you could get into that, but you're getting mighty complicated when you get into trying to research what company you do really, what's the background on. Some of it's going to be self-regulating. I mean, if you get too many in there, people are going to drop off, because it's not going to be worth the effort.
That's true.
So, I'm not so sure I want to get into trying to figure out Bob and Randy's, or Randy and Bob's, or, you know, that seems a little.
And that's probably why, and I wasn't here when they changed the code. That's probably why they did it the way they did it, so that they wouldn't get into, well, my mother owns this company, or my brother owns this company, even though it's the same wrecker that may come out on four different locations.
What are the penalties for, I guess, showing up late to a location to try to turn a wreck, or, I mean, some other issue that may come up? How do you penalize?
Typically, we'll suspend them from the list, from the rotation list. So, we can suspend them for a week, we can suspend them for a month, we can suspend them for a year, we can suspend them indefinitely.
The other thing we do, there's a 30-minute response time.
30-minute response.
And after 30 minutes, if they're not there, we simply call the next company on the list, and if the first company shows up, we send them home.
And they're, they go to the bottom of the list, so they lose that slot if they.
When we're talking about actually augmenting that at times, maybe 20 minutes?
25 minutes, or 20 to 25 minutes.
Whichever. Do you guys see fit?
Do you find your officers doing that a lot, or little, in a current model?
Typically, we don't, because they know the repercussions of that.
Right now, they're pretty accurate.
Typically, they're there very, very quickly, and they understand that they're under that 30-minute time limit. And so, and plus, they lose that slot, and it goes all the way back to 22. They're number 22 on the list, so it takes some time to get that property.
Well, I still think there should be some limitations on the distance. If not for anybody, but the person whose car has been towed, to be able to easily retrieve that vehicle. I think that's something that really needs to be given, you know, primary thought on this thing.
And I think that was the reason for the ETJ versus the city limits. And I think, I had the opportunity to talk to a number of chiefs when I was in Cherokee, and that's why theirs are written the way they are, is to try to keep somebody from having to drive 20 or 30 miles, you know, when their car is towed, in order to retrieve it.
You just called, on the rotation list, you only called for accidents, correct? You don't do it for, like, seizures of vehicles?
Well, we do it for, we do it primarily for accidents, but we will do it for other things, like an abandoned car in the middle of the road, or anything that's non-consensual that we tow. We use the wrecker list except for seizures. Seizures since we'll be responsible for the bill.
You've got somebody contracted specifically for that.
And remember, this has nothing to do with an individual who chooses on their own to select a company. So, whether you're on the rotation list or not, if you have an accident and you prefer, you know, A, B, C towing, then you have the right to tell the officer, I'd like to have A, B, C towing called.
But there is a 30-minute time limit, according to the code, that they have to respond there. So, can't leave the intersection blocked for an extended period of time.
What I'm hearing is that what we have works fine. Y'all are satisfied. Response time is good, there's enough competition, but yet, it's not a burden for you to do the inspections. What's happened is we've had a change in the ETJ. We could take care of that by grandfathering. Those current wreckers, companies that are currently on the list, even though they lost their spot, they're grandfathered in. You still keep, you still keep the time, you still be strict and equitable in that, on how you enforce that, and you just grandfather those who've lost, through no fault of their own, they've lost their location. You haven't increased, you haven't have to worry about allowing too many in to become an inspection burden for you. You still have plenty of, I think, competition, you've got plenty of opportunities for folks to make a living, and I don't think it's, I don't think we would be unfair grandfathering those who lost what they, what they had, through no fault of theirs.
So, are you, if I may, are you generally in favor then of the wording on number three? Allow grandfathering when NC DOT, city, or some governmental entity requires relocation?
Keep what we've got. Keep the city limits and ETJ. That addresses the concerns that we might have about how far a citizen has to travel to go get their vehicle. Keep the 30 minutes, because we're concerned about speed and addressing, clearing the wreckage for police, fire, and for the citizens. And then, continue, and then, put in the grandfathering when it requires relocation, so that they, they've not been adversely affected by, through no fault of their own.
And I might add, we probably should think about, you know, how that's going to work, because we wouldn't want them to be in Sneed's Ferry or.
Work out the details.
Well, you know, if they've lost their, if they've lost, if it's just, we did away with the ETJ in that area, their location's still there. You might have a situation where DOT buys their property, they're going to have to relocate. I would say they're still grandfathered, but they still have to meet that 30-minute response time. If they don't meet the 30-minute response time, that's, they're, they're not going to be able to meet our requirements.
Mr. Carter, you got called in a little?
No, sir. I think Mr. Warden was hitting it to, how do you deal with a person who, the DOT takes their property? That person can't stay there, so they've got to relocate. Where do they relocate? We'll have to devise a perimeter of what would be acceptable to council as to where they may have to relocate. But again, they're grandfathered in because of that governmental action. But I think that, I mean, I think we can make it happen.
Does location automatically assume, that's the storage site too?
Yes, sir. It has to be, the storage site is really.
Has to be synonymous.
And we have to inspect the storage site, and it has to be, some folks have two locations, the business location and then the storage location. So, there could be two locations, but it, all those, those have to be inspected on a yearly basis.
But the storage location has to be within that.
Right.
So, why don't we study? Within 30 minutes.
Yes.
We'll take.
No, within the ETJ or the city limits.
Or, or, like I said, one thing that you might do is, when the DOT is the one forcing you to relocate, because obviously, you're not keeping them in the same place, we're going to have to work out where that storage lot could go. But if that's the general direction you're comfortable, that helps us as a staff, and we'll bring you back more detail, that hones in on that number three suggestion.
I'd just like to add, I think that it looked to me like James is the furthest distance. So, maybe that could be our parameter.
We can look at that.
You know, since that's, you've already got that one established.
Thank you very much for the direction, Chief. Thank you all for the excellent work. And by the way, I have to, once again, the city police department and the fire department just do an excellent job responding to emergencies, especially traffic emergencies. You guys do an excellent job, sir.
Thank you, John.
Michael and Susan, please. Glenn, can we go to the first slide? These are the hidden slides. Sorry about that. We opened up the hidden slide folder, we're going back to last meeting. Okay. Two weeks ago, when we worked on this, you asked us to hold a special meeting of the Recreation Parks Advisory Committee. You have several of them who are in the audience with us tonight. That meeting occurred on Tuesday of last week, I believe it was at 4 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
And it was over at the Commons, at the, we no longer call it the Senior Center, because one council member goes over there regularly for exercise, and he says he is not a senior. So, we now call it the Adult Center. Although his wife questions whether he's actually an adult, just as my wife questions my adult.
He's a Randolph Jr., so he does not mean that as a senior.
I figured out what's wrong with it at this point, because you're always excited when you're a senior in high school. You're always excited when you're a senior in college, but you really hate to graduate when you're a senior.
That's for sure. At the meeting, Susan did an excellent job going through the options which we had shown to you. In that discussion, though, we brought up two additional options that we shared, or came out of the discussion with the Recreation Parks Advisory Committee. I'd like to spend a minute talking to you about those two options. On Tuesday morning of last week, Michael and Susan, Alan Baker and I met, and Ron, met with John Sawyer, who's the architect who has worked with us on the Jack Emmett facility and other city facilities. From that, we came up with another option, which we call Option 7. Option 7 would be to keep the community center. That is the building in white on the right. It would remove the current gym. It would build on the current site a multipurpose center, and it would expand the community center. Cost estimate, one and a half to $2 million. Now, the green would be the expansion of the community center. The white, of course, is the current community center. And the blue would be your multipurpose center. The multipurpose center would be capable and would actually be larger than the current gym that has been used for however many years to play basketball. So, it's not like you are eliminating basketball. On the other hand, as the advisory committee talked, and Mr. Jackson did a very good job as your liaison, they said they would prefer to build a full-size gym there. That you would keep the community center as it currently is. You would build, you would remove the current gym, you would build on the current site a full-size gym. Our cost estimate is $2.5 to $3 million.
Richard, quick question. Is that in addition to the renovation of the?
Community center?
Yes, well, let's go back. In both diagrams, the community center has already been rehabbed. If you have a chance to go by, I think you'll be very pleased, it's in operation.
So, to its current format, you would just be, okay.
What we would do in both of these, though, is, as you notice in both graphics, the parking is on the back side, and the entrance is on the front side on South Drive. What we would recommend in either of these options is that you would enter from the parking lot, and you would come around by the playground, and if you notice the little white area between the blue and the white box with the black, that would become a central corridor. So, you would come from the parking lot, up past the playground, go through the atrium, similar to what you have at Surgeon City. You would then enter the community center from the backside, not the South Drive, and you would enter the gym from that same corridor. Those are just concepts. And under either cor, under either concept, that would be something that we would recommend. Reverse how you use the site. What we recommend to you is this, go ahead and eliminate the options 1 through 6. Now, to be technical, we only showed you five. I can't figure out what option 6 was. But eliminate those, authorize us to move forward with John Sawyer, the architect, to analyze both Option 7 and Option 8. Have them perform the feasibility study to make sure that both options would fit on the site, that they would identify other issues that we haven't even thought about. One thing we do know is this, if you expand the building, you're going to have to address stormwater. The more impervious area you have, then you're going to have to address stormwater. The other thing that they would give you is an opinion of probable cost. The other thing that they would give you is an opinion of probable cost. I mean, I can tell you, Mr. Warden does this a lot better than I do. These are swags. My estimate for option seven is one and a half to $2 million. It may be a little more. I don't think it'd be any less. On option eight, these are my swags, two and a half to three and a half million. It may be more. I don't think it would be less. But what this would give you is several things. Number one, it would begin to focus us on what we're going to do in that community and that park. Number two, it would then give you what I'mma call professional opinions on the site plan and professional opinions on the cost. That way you have the best possible accurate information to decide which option should we go with. What we do know is the city needs to move forward with Jack Hammett. You know, we finally got the insurance settlement of $750,000 plus or minus dollars. We know that there's not going to be any FEMA money to come to rescue us. And we know that that community deserves and needs a facility, whether it's option seven or option eight. As the old saying goes, it's time for us to get on. So I would recommend, and I've asked council member Jackson, since he was the liaison, uh, you know, this came out of the advisory group on Tuesday of last week. Sir, thoughts?
I agree with moving forward with the, you know, discussing those two options. You know where I stand concerning the gymnasium. Also, I know you all have a challenge with programs, space as well and offices. So just maximizing those spaces based on the needs and see what, see what we get from there. Also, I was wondering, have you all looked at any other funding streams? Like, I don't know if there's grants out there, maybe even to add for your programs, particular programs. I don't know about operations, because a lot of times you do operations, those are challenges with grants. But I was just wondering if you had looked at, you know?
We know that there are grants out there. One of the bigger ones is the Pardeff, and we just closed our Pardeff grant out for the Marina. So there are grants out there. It's certainly something we can look at. What they want to see on a Pardeff grant is new elements added. So replacing a facility with the same like facilities wouldn't qualify. It has to be added recreational opportunities. But there are other grants we're always willing to look into and see if we can apply for, absolutely.
We got smart people, see how creative we can get.
Absolutely.
Show them the two options again, seven.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. What is a full-size gym? I mean, I understand what a, a official floor plan. Want to say that's the court, that's the court itself.
50 to 84, and then you have to have room outside of that.
That's what I'm saying. Is it going to be?
The one that's there around the 60s.
Was the true size. You don't know.
Well.
It's what you decide, I would think.
Yes. And, and let's, let's think about, uh, you know, let's use the one at the bottom at the Commons, the 50 by 84. Now, uh, the gym height is a minimum of 25 feet. This says 30 because that's what the Commons is. But, you know, for those people like Mr. Warden who like the high arcing three, you know, three length court, three-quarter court shot, he's got to have 25 feet to get the basket.
Minimum.
Minimum. So if you look at the court, you have to also remember, you got to have area behind the backboard. You got to have area on both sides. You got to decide are you going to have any stands. Now, I will tell you, the one at, at the Commons, uh, you've got stands on both sides. And I would say to you, I think you should have some bleachers in this new facility, but not on both sides. This is not going to be tournament kind of play. Because you are going to use it in either option for your smaller children or maybe larger children. You need a place for parents who've driven them there to sit instead of, uh, standing around. So, you know, pick a number. I would say that if the court's 50 feet wide, you need 10 feet on one side just for passage. And you're going to need at least another 20 to 30 feet on the other side for passage and for some bleachers. So if you add 10 to 50 and 10 more and 20 more, you know, pretty soon you're getting up, let's say 60, 70, that's like 90 feet. At the ends, you know, you could add 10 feet on both. I can tell you that back in the dark ages before they invented electricity and I played basketball, I played in a gym in Everglades, Florida.
Using beach baskets, right?
That's right. We were with beach baskets. And the, and the basketball goal was two feet away from the end wall. And all it took was one time going down for a layup at the wrong angle, and you learn very quickly. You need more, you need a different angle. So, you know, when you look at these dimensions, that's why having an architect work with us to actually show you the true.
What's the capability?
Yes.
Richard, what do you think the potential cost would be to do that?
Oh, I, I think for that, uh, we're talking just, you know, nominal money, 10, $15,000. And it's the type of thing that you need regardless, even if you pick an option tonight, you need an architect to give you the concept plan and the opinion of probable cost.
I thought when we had the citizen survey that the majority of the people wanted something on a multipurpose facility rather than a basketball court.
Yes, sir. A lot of folks wanted programming space, computer space, fitness rooms, those sort of things. Um, I don't have them in front of me. I apologize, but a lot of folks.
We're discussing right now more of a basketball facility than a multipurpose center.
And then there were folks that also asked for in, in indoor gym space. It was pretty split. It was a little bit depending on the question.
But Mr. Bittner, if, if you look at option seven, uh, that's what we were trying to do as a staff. Give you a multipurpose building that could house basketball.
Yeah.
And have a lot of events. But if you notice the green area, we would also be expanding the community center. Now, you could also do the same thing with option eight. Uh, you know, that's going to add some cost to that, but you could still, under option eight, have an expansion of your community center component.
That is substantially more, uh, increase cost.
Yes, sir.
Well, let's get, let's, uh, let's go ahead.
Could I, Mr. Salt?
Go ahead.
I, I'd like, could I, since we're going to eliminate one through five or six, could I see those real quick? Just a, you got, if you got them summarized somewhere?
I'm sure Glenn does somewhere on this computer.
Before I say yay.
But you were saying with a multipurpose, uh, facility, it wouldn't be a basketball court in particular, right? Is that what you were saying?
Uh, yeah, I don't envision necessarily basketball court. I envision goals. I just envision more of a multipurpose space that we could utilize for, like Mr. Bittner said, some other opportunities. I think we could put goals in there. I just don't know that it would be solely basketball.
But if we could figure out, we could use a, a facility with a gymnasium as a multipurpose space.
Sure.
Glenn, can you pull it up from option one, please? I found option three.
Maybe hidden, hidden. Maybe, maybe in the secret files there, not the hidden one, but the secret one.
One of them.
Well, option one.
There we go.
There we go.
Option one was basically to renovate the existing center as is. That was option one. Option two, and there's an example of what option one looks like another. Option two would be to tear down the facility completely and only build a community center. It would not have a gymnasium of any sort. Option three, option three would be to build a large facility back near the, uh, the school. And it would have one large court and you would move everything from where it is today. Option four would be to build two full-size courts. And you can see, you know, uh, where that would be looking.
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely out against four there, so.
And then option five would be to try to build two courts up on the current site. And then option six, we can't find because apparently I couldn't count, and that's why I went to option seven. So again, uh, option seven is, uh, option seven and option eight. Would like to ask your permission to move forward and study and then bring you back the analysis.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, me too.
Time frame?
I'd like to do it by April because at the end of the day, we've got a capital improvement program that you're going to be looking at and trying to fund.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good with that. I do want to mention, though, there wasn't a, there was some that didn't actually, you know, fill out the survey, but I got a lot of interest in it afterwards. And actually, a lot of those folks, they'd come, um, come by off support for it. So I'm glad to see a movement forward in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's good. I think Wally and his staff are ready now for the road resurfacing. And gentlemen, I'm going to yield my seat. Now, Wally came with his bodyguards.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
My name is Jason Miles. I'm the senior civil engineer for the city. And I'm going to present to you our city road resurfacing program. Uh, map shown here indicates our city maintained streets in red. Total's about 165 miles. Uh, there's an additional roughly 68 miles of NCDOT and private streets as well. Tonight, I'll specifically address funding, pavement rating system, evaluation and repair costs associated with repairs, upcoming projects and funding alternatives. Pile Bill is a street aid program by the state of North Carolina to incorporated municipalities in the state. State funds are derived from fuel taxes and can be used for repair and maintenance, repaving or rehabilitation, and constructing and widening of existing streets. Funds can also be used for bikeways, greenways or sidewalks, including ADA improvements. The total state appropriation is 147.5 million. Distribution of funds is based on population and road mileage as indicated here. Uh, the 1935 per person, about 75% of the funds, again, based on population, 25% of the funds based on road mileage were 1590 per mile. Jacksonville allocation is 1.7 million this year. It's important to note that our funding is diminished over the previous five years due to increased development throughout the state competing for the same pot of money.
Do we did have an increase last year or?
We had an increase in the number of, of the street mileage.
Yes. For pile bills?
Up to 165 miles. Yes, sir.
And it came, what we found is when we had reported previously, some of our streets, um, you know, we may have a, you know, just pick, we may have a Doris Road and a Doris Court. And what we found is in some cases, the court may have gotten reported, but the road or the street did not. Wasn't every case, but for some reason, we, we had, um, the, the court or street that were named the same thing, one may have gotten dropped off for some reason. We don't know if that was off the map or off the street listing. So our street number mileage went up, but what we found in through an audit was that we had some missing, um, courts or, or streets.
Can you go back to the previous slide for a second?
This one here?
Yeah. Based on population. So are those census numbers when you talk about?
Yes.
So that's another reason why I said for it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our city budgeting, um, is generally split between streets maintenance and capital projects to include pedestrian and ADA improvements. This slide here indicates kind of how it's tipped up.
And one other thing I'd like to add to that is, um, as we program our capital projects, the, anything that we don't use in street maintenance, which would be, which would fall under Kelly Cannon's area, he's our new street superintendent, been with us just under a year now, I guess. And, um, anything that's not used for maintenance out of that 890 that we budget automatically rolls into our capital improvement, uh, project fund. So for example, if he'll, if they only use 750,000, then that, that extra 140 would roll into being able to use it for additional paving of road mileage.
This is a simple graphic of our pavement condition rating system. Uh, our assessment considers how much of the quantity, what type and how bad the severity of pavement. Our pavement condition rating system breaks down streets into segments which are independently rated based on 13 criterion. Uh, we're looking at reducing that criterion down to 10. So it's a little bit redundant perhaps, but, uh, a numerical and letter value is assigned based on our evaluation. Our engineering evaluation, sorry, catch up here. Our engineering evaluation considers pavement condition rating, street classifications such as collector, cul-de-sacs, et cetera, amount of traffic, number of street segments that need to be repaved, condition of utilities, geotechnical observations, including poor drainage. It's important to note that we try to do a thorough evaluation of our underground utilities and address those problems before repaving associated streets. So Henderson Drive was a, a good example of that, even though that's going to be repaid by DOT. Uh, we went out and discussed all of the underground utility issues beforehand. Our focus for street projects prior to 2013 generally addressed below average and poor streets, graded as D's, failed and very poor streets graded as E's. Uh, project types included full reconstruction and pavement reclamation. Our focus for street projects after 2013 generally addresses fair condition streets or lower sea level streets. Uh, project types include repair of localized areas of failure, which is often done by our streets division, and milling and repaving, which is done by our contractors. Typical cost for mill and overlay versus reclamation is less than half. Thus, we can stretch our dollars further through mill and overlay. Please note that these costs do not include ADA improvements. Our annual repaving projects total approximately three miles per year. Depends on funding availability, width and condition of streets, drainage issues and ADA requirements.
May I ask you a quick question? Are PDA requirements on that? Resurfacing the, the street itself doesn't kick in any PDA requirement?
It actually does. There's, from Federal Highway Administration, uh, they basically said if you mill and resurface a street, then you have to upgrade the handicap ramps at the intersections. You don't have to come back and fix the sidewalk along the entire roadway, but you at least have to upgrade the handicap ramps at the intersections.
Well, if you take, uh, just for sake of knowing, what would be the cost to do at one of those ramps?
It's about $1,500, give or take, per ramp. So it's not inexpensive and you typically have ford every intersection.
Our upcoming street projects, uh, fiscal year 19, street segments were catching up a bit. Uh, they've been designed and we'll go out in a bid packet soon. Our fiscal year 20 street segments include Dewett Street, Chatter Ridge, Liberty, and we're currently evaluating five others. Uh, we have an increase of approximately one mile from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. Uh, the street list there for fiscal year 19 includes Center Street, Billis Drive, Parkwood Drive, Greenbrier, Road and Court, Nottingham Road, Hyatt Circle and Tweed Drive.
I think it's important to note that we do street segments, um, as Jason mentioned earlier. So we may go from one block, you know, we'll do from one block to the next block. That's a street segment. Just because the street is listed, we may not do the entire length. And we do that trying to hit the areas that need to be repaired and stretching the life out of those streets that, um, you know, are in good condition and we can leave in place for a while longer. So that's why it's a. So that's why it's important to note those are street segments. It's not the entire, so we're not going to go repay all of Village Drive. It's only a certain segment. And if you have any questions about which segments, we can provide that information to you later.
Also, can people just call in to find out where their streets are in terms of future plans?
We don't go, we have a list and we have the grade. We can very easily pull up the grade of any street segment. We only look out a couple of years at which streets are actually in there. And a large part of that is those underground utilities. And we may have a street that's in really bad shape, but if the utilities underneath of it are also in bad shape, then that one's much further out because of the cost of the project.
As a reminder, we have 165 miles of city roads. Again, at three miles per year, you're looking at 40-plus years to address all of these streets. Typical pavement design life is 20 years. So it'll take 40-plus years to address our current total. You know, and of course, new streets are added over that timeframe. Funding alternatives. PAL bill funds, current funding level is 750,000 plus unused maintenance, maintenance funds, covers about three miles per year. Again, the average of 40-plus years is, is obviously outliving the design life of our pavements. This graphic indicates a potential funding alternative using license plate fees on top of the PAL bill money, which covers about three miles. For example, $25 license plate fee can parlay into an additional 2.5 miles. A second funding alternative utilizes PAL bill plus the general fund supplements. So, for example, PAL bill funds three miles. For every 500,000, we can fund about 1.5 miles from the general fund. So, the second alternative. The third funding alternative is the PAL bill plus a quarter cent sales tax. So considering about nine miles, again, PAL bill can cover about three miles. A quarter cent sales tax adds about 2 million, which can cover approximately six miles, given that 500,000 per 1.5 miles.
Well, 20 years. Is it, is it just the three, three alternatives you got?
I assume it could be a combination of alternatives as well.
So you say the sale of quarter cent sales tax would generate $2 million a year?
That's what we took from the slide that we printed, we presented to you, I don't know, about a year ago.
Well, I personally think that we tried once to get that, it didn't work out. We debated this one time before, and we've looked at these alternatives before. And we know that the quarter cent sales tax is the way to go. If we can ever get our state legislators to our delegation to allow us the opportunity to put this before the voters. If the voters want, you know, the good roads, let them make that decision. You know, I mean, they want to see an additional quarter cent. And the reason why I lean toward a quarter cent is that you get, you capture a bigger audience of people paying, not just people that pays taxes in the city, but people that use our roads that live outside the city. So, I mean, that's, that's why I will continue to lean towards that option personally. And I would, I, I'm planning on addressing another letter to our legislative delegation, asking them to, to do this. I think we've had enough, we've had enough generation of, of concerns from the public about this condition of roads here. Of course, hopefully Henderson Drive being paved this spring, which we got that email today, may help a lot of that, that consternation or whatever, we've been catching over that. But I, I just don't, I just don't like the idea of the license tax. To me, that's just not a good way, that's not a good thing about it.
The only, the only concern I have with that is that, even if we got that quarter cent sales tax, we talking about maybe two years before we could, even if folks voted in favor of it.
I don't remember, do you remember the full timeline? It, it took a referendum. A legislature referendum, and there was some costs associated with that.
Well, the concept that the mayor and council authorized us to send to the delegation last year, you recall it was this, it would be a quarter cent. It would last for five years. That it would go to the public as a referendum, that the public would have to approve it. That all money generated by it would go to road resurfacing. It could not be sent off for drainage, it couldn't be sent off for sidewalks, it would go to road resurfacing. The other part is after five years, it would sunset. And if the public wanted to revote it, then they could. What we also know is that throughout the state, every municipality has the same issue. Mr. Lozera was president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. He did a great job in bringing this to the attention of all of the cities in our annual goal-setting meeting. And as a delegation, I'm sorry, as an association, the North Carolina League of Municipalities voted that as one of their top 15 goals, I believe it was, or 10 goals. And I think what we should do is ask Mr. Lozera, well, although he's not president anymore, you are the, and so you still have a seat. What I would ask is that, number one, we ask you to continue to push this at the state level for all cities to have the ability to have a referendum on. And number two, I agree with the mayor's idea that we send a letter out to our current delegation and ask them again, please authorize us to bring this as far as a referendum. Do we understand why we didn't succeed last time?
Yeah, the county asked for it.
The county was asking for a half cent.
A half cent too, a half cent.
Well, the agreement was, the agreement was if they'd all didn't agree to it, it wouldn't move forward. It's a long story, but it's an issue that affects all of North Carolina. I mean, we have 8,000 miles of roads, failing bridges all across North Carolina, no revenues.
What is the?
Do you know anything about it?
What's the license plate forecast and revenue?
I can pull up that chart.
750,000 up to 25,000.
So if you'll recall, I believe you could actually go up to $30 with the road tag, but $5 of that had to be transit. So $5 could be used for any legal purpose that you could use. And then the other had to be for street paving, if I remember right. So you could go up to 25.
Well, when last we talked about that, I was opposed to it, thinking that administrative costs are pretty heavy. Then I found out that the state would include that on your registration fee too. So your administrative costs are far less than what I thought.
I think.
But it's only.
The bad thing is you already probably taxed every year on that deal.
That puts an unadded burden to a lot of people. That $25 is a lot of money to.
I didn't say, I didn't think 25.
You said up to 25.
Wilmington, I think.
So you could go $5.
I think we need to talk real world, guys. Real world is that as long as the county insists that they want another half cent or a quarter cent sales tax, and we want a quarter cent for the road, they're, they're not gonna approve both. So, so we're gonna be right back where we are right now? I don't, I don't see, I mean, we've, we've got an election, maybe there'll be a change in feelings there, but, but with, with that competing interest there, they're not gonna be able to support both.
But it's not, they're, they're just offering the opportunity, they're not.
It's the people's vote, they do it in South Carolina.
They could offer the people both.
Well, the reason we need to move back up. If the election stands and reelects the current incumbents, that's not gonna happen. We have a chance if we have a change, but without that cha-change, it won't happen. So, so we're right back to where we are right now.
The forecast for PAL bill money, I was reading a report someplace where I think one or two states, they're increasing their vehicle registration fees 3-400%, 200-300, because gasoline tax revenues are falling because of the more availability of electric vehicles.
But they're starting.
North Carolina's gonna do the same thing.
They're starting to impose electric vehicle fees.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, they're already doing this, kind of recovering.
Yeah, they're starting to recover the losses.
Well, you're still, you're still seeing increased gas mileage per vehicle. So that's reducing the amount of gas that people burn. It's, there may be more vehicles on the road though, maybe to offset. But the reality of that also is that that continues to decline. And I don't know that they, you know, we, we start talking about the, the future and, and you get into ride sharing and.
Well, that is the future.
Yeah, the sharing of, of vehicles perhaps. You're gonna see, I think you're gonna see mileage continue to, to be an issue for our, for our tax base.
How do you follow with that?
Well, I certainly, I certainly would still continue to pursue the quarter cent sales tax. I mean, I think that's the best way to do it. And of course, we might be right back in the table here in about a month or two. I'll look into a different way to do it, but, you know, I still think that's.
I, I don't disagree that that's the most common sense. I just don't know that the political, political will at, at that state level.
And I don't know, so the county's still asking for that money, Bob.
I don't know, I don't know either.
Have we not in the past used some general fund? Did we have some general fund?
Just would always grass.
We're carrying, we're carrying point in terms of fund balance.
In the, to answer your question, sir, in the 10 years that I've been here, we have not used fund balance. We have not used general fund subsidy. The current fund balance, Gail is not in the audience, so.
She's in council chambers.
She's in council chambers. But the, the current fund balance is pretty substantial. I would say to you that if you're going to use it, remember the experience from the hurricane. We had about six to seven million dollars worth of damage that we had to front. Yes, eventually, we're gonna get that back from either an insurance company or from FEMA. But if you look at some of the other communities in our area who haven't recovered at all, it was because they didn't have a fund balance. I would say to you, of all the options that were shown to you tonight, none of them are good options, but the only option that you can actually control is the use of your fund balance. You know, I would also say to you that if you're going to do that, also remember this. It's your savings account. You would be spending non-recurring money for recurring expenses. So what I would say is this, if you want to use some of your fund balance, don't make a policy. Make a year statement that says for this coming paving in the spring, we're gonna allocate X dollars. But don't set a policy that says from this day on, you're going to do it simply because you can't forecast the future.
My, my, my comment there is last year, the NFY 19, we added 3.5 million dollars to our unobligated general fund because of various things that went on, the, the sales tax did well and so forth and so on. So I, I tend to agree with, with, with Dr. Woodruff there. I, you know, I, I think for FY 21, we might be willing to, to take a portion of that money and, and say, well, let's, let's put it towards a one-time resurfacing to help catch up a little bit, take care of some of our worst. But, but again, that's something we'll have to be looking at overall budget. We've got other, other issues too.
I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think we've set, I don't know whether it's still policy or not, at one time, we had a goal of a minimum fund balance of 15%.
Yes, sir.
And maybe that should be the policy, we only look at paving money for fund balance in excess of that 15% on a yearly basis.
Well, you know, quick math, which, since Gail isn't here, I guess I can do math in public. If she was here, she wouldn't let me do it.
I'm taking notes.
If you, if you assume that the general fund is 50 million dollars, then obviously 15% of that is a minimum of 7.5 million that you'd have to have for fund balance. Remember Hurricane Florence, the impact on Hurricane Florence was almost 7 million. So, but I, even though your policy says the 15%.
As a minimum.
As a minimum. What your practice has been is substantially more. So if you'd like, which certainly it sounds like you would, we can provide you with some information on your unobligated fund balance. Remember, the fund balance is made up of obligated and unobligated. Now, Gail and the archers may use different terms, what's the difference? There are some things you have to keep in there and you can't spend. It's part of your fund balance, but you have it in there. Then there's the unrestricted fund balance. So we'll get you some more information, and then you can decide.
I think, I think with the next item, that perhaps this is something that needs to be included in that, or is included in that conversation also.
We could certainly do that, yes, sir.
Are the streets branded, what period of, how period, for, how often do you assign the grades to the streets?
We grade them internally, the last time it was done was in, at the beginning of FY 19. Yes, FY 19.
So two years ago.
Yeah, so we try to do it at least every three years.
Every three years, okay.
Yes.
I have a question before we end it on sidewalks. Are we still using the philosophy on sidewalks to keep adjoining rather than? You're continuing sidewalk projects till you finish a particular project, right?
Correct.
Years ago, they were doing a piece, and then going somewhere else and doing another piece, never finishing a single piece.
Yes.
We're focused, we're still focusing on completing sidewalks in particular areas that.
That's correct. When we focus our sidewalk projects, we typically focus on, you know, major corridors, commercial and schools, and we get quite a bit of input from the Transportation Services Division or Department as well as, you know, what areas we needed to look at.
And while you're touching that, you may have noticed, I'm sure the public has noticed, that in the downtown area, there have been, pick a number, 50, 60, 70, 80 handicap ramps put in the last three or four months. Those were not funded by the city. They were funded through the DOT grant, and Anthony and his staff did an excellent job finding that money because those projects are not on the state system. You bridge streets opposite a city street. And yet, pick a number, there were at least 20 new handicap ramps put on there. That is part of your ADA plan, which you have adopted, which we're now implementing.
I think the only thing, other thing I'd like to add is, you know, anytime we do water and sewer line repairs, you know, whether we have to cut into the street or, or tear a piece of sidewalk or anything like that, that cannot be repaired using PAL bill funds. So that is repaired using water and sewer funds. Same with if we have to replace any water lines or sewer lines in the street, we repave the trench that we've cut with water and sewer funds, not PAL bill funds. Now, if we do it as a combination project and we overlay the entire street, then we'll contribute, we'll do the overlay portion with PAL bill funds. But the trench paving where we did the utility work is done with utility funds.
And once again, to close this, we did get confirmation today from the DOT that funds have been released and that Henderson will be fully resurfaced by the state this coming spring. Mayor, I know you have an item you'd like to share.
Go pass those around, please. All right, last, the last time we met, I mentioned something about the 2030 visioning, that I wanted to do something, I, I kinda referred to something like a retreat or whatever. This is more like a strategic planning session and also an organizational introspection to see where we're at. Where are we gonna be a decade from now, through this next decade? What kind of challenges we're gonna be facing? You know, what are some of the opportunities that you're gonna have? And I think this would be a good time for us to get together as a council and discuss some of these things. And this is the first, this is a draft here. Feel free to add anything or make suggestions on anything to make improvements. But this would be something that we would do in part. I've talked with Dr. Woodruff about doing this and, and using his staff to be able to provide us with the accurate numbers. Often would be essential for us to be able to go forward with this analysis. If you look on your paper there, again, it says 2030 vision through analysis of all the aspects of city services. And you'll see here, it lists many of them, our financial forecast. And what we're looking at as far as tax base growth, changes in property, in property tax, sales tax growth, where sewer revenues. sales tax growth, water sewer revenues and other, other sources of revenue. Our expense forecast, what we're looking at, you know, we've got some major issues that we're going to be facing here as a city as far as expenses that are, are about to creep up on us or have already crept up on us. One being the retirement system, you know, is wanting to go up. I think what we said was one point two million dollars over the next three years, four years?
Four years.
Four years. And this one point two million will stay with us.
Correct.
Until they decide to raise it again. So, you know, that's, that's a challenge. And we got to look at our, our competitive wages, you know. We, we want to make sure that we're able to staff our organization with people that are capable of, you know, doing the job our citizens expect, or, or, you know, providing the services our citizens have come to expect. And also COLAs, we got to look at COLAs, some of the benefits. We've got health insurance situations there that we need to look at closely. I think you're going to get me, get us numbers for the health insurance and where we're failing and where we're succeeding and all that. Also, look at some of our personnel issues that we're going to be dealing with over the next ten years. You know, we got some retirements that may come up, you know, in the next ten years. That's going to change how our city operates. So we're going to have to actually look at making some replacements at some point. Look at projections of staffing our different departments. Look at our long-term debt as far as what we're borrowing and what we'll have to borrow in the future as far as things like from our general fund items, water sewer fund, our stormwater fund. Look at, a lot of items of equipment replacement we're going to have to look at. That, you know, these are, these aren't cheap. These are not, not inexpensive issues that we're looking at in the future. Our capital improvements, you can see we have many general fund projects, water sewer projects, stormwater projects, all these transportation major projects. We're also looking at regulatory changes that may need to be put in place, such as rate studies, community studies, and business practice studies. That's just briefly until we get together. I, I thought this was a good start and any comments or additions? Or do you think it's a waste of time? Or, or? Shouldn't be doing it, shouldn't be doing it. We haven't done it in a while. We haven't done it in a while.
Need to do it.
Let me give you one example. The mayor, when he talked to me about this, and he was asking about health insurance. We currently have a fund, five point five million dollar health insurance fund, we're self-funded. It's our program. It's operated through Blue Cross Blue Shield as the administrator, but it's our program. It's fully funded either by the taxpayer contributing through what the general fund and the other funds pay, or through the taxpayer, through the salaries and what city employees contribute from their salaries. So either way, the money comes from the taxpayer. If you assume just a five percent increase per year in healthcare, which I think all of us would pray that it would stay that low. At five percent in twenty thirty, that same program is going to go from five and a half million to eight point nine million dollars. That's just at five percent per year. If you look at the second page, under Area Five IT, the replacement of our IT program, which we're currently beginning to study, is going to have to occur in the next three to five years. That's a four to five million dollar purchase. You know, when the mayor talked to me about this internal analysis, I have to be honest with you, I never even thought about it. But he's hit upon something that's essential. It's like anything in your life, can you afford the future? And you can't wait for the future to get here to figure out what the future is going to cost you. So as a manager, I can tell you, when he talked to me about it, I one hundred percent support this level of analysis. It's essential. And we would encourage you to suggest other areas. And it is an analysis that I believe your staff should do and is capable of doing. And it's something that we can do within the next week. I'm sorry, did I say the next week? Fifty-two weeks.
I was going to say.
It's hard to plan a decade in a week. We, we, Dr. Woodruff and I have had several conversations about this, and, you know, been kind of working on it for a little while, so.
I'm in favor for sure.
How do you propose doing this?
I would assume that whenever we get sufficient information together on all these topics that we're talking about here, we would set a date and probably have a special meeting. Would that be the best way to do that?
Well, what I would suggest is that we, you know, it's like eating the old hot dog. I know y'all eat hamburgers, but I eat hot dogs, as you know. Let us work it up from a staff standpoint, and as we, as we create the information, we will begin to feed it to you a little at a time. Now, we're not going to drag this out, and we're not going to just have five minutes worth. We'll try to submit it to you in sufficient detail, where it may be over four or five presentations, you can begin to see what I'll call the chapters of the report. Does that sound like a reasonable plan? Mr. Vidner, you've done these in your professional career.
Yeah, I think we should. The only question is, I think there should be some priority given to these, these areas. Some hinge on others more so than you might think.
Well, I would welcome, and I, I hope the council would not mind this, you spent many years in this chair. So I would welcome your thoughts to assist as we plan the schedule for work. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yes.
All right, is there anybody, anybody on the floor? Everybody, everybody is agreeing?
Yes.
So let's go ahead and have a motion to adjourn, so it's all business.
Second.